Once it became level funded, once it became funded, we were able to invite other students for free. And then because the PTO backed it, we were able to invite a lot more students for free. So it was joint between the Cunningham Collycott. So there was some conversations that had needed to happen first about, you know, the students I paid, where are the money going to, and how we're gonna work with Glenn to sort of get it all balanced. And then, once that took place and the PTOS agreed to support the program, we were able to offer it to every student, at least offer it to every single student an extended day, for free, if they weren't already signed up. And again, even with a few Saturdays left, people sending in checks to take advantage of even the last two days. Obviously, that's from the great work from Mrs. Fady, our gym teacher who's there, and Mrs. Lathwell, our art teacher who's there doing clay activities with the students, but also the great team of teachers that are making the learning fun. We were able to put two teachers in each of the classrooms. So every ELA math class for the grade levels has two teachers teaching, which is something that I think really helps, benefits. That Saturday Scholars Program is something we definitely want to hopefully start earlier next year and really build from our success this year.
Great.
Sorry for not getting to that question.
No, that's okay.
Well, I think this is our last Site Council presentation. I'm pleased to tell you that the Oscar for Video of the Year goes to Cunningham Site This is, this is the type of presentation that we hope for. And what it demonstrates is that you've, you've developed an incredibly cohesive team that everybody is pulling in the same direction, everybody's working in the same direction, everyone's enthused about what they're doing, and that you've created a horizontal and a vertical integration that is pretty impressive. And, and what's most apparent is that it's clear that you, you see the, the full six-year experience at the Cunningham as a continuum, and that, that all along that, that continuum, you're, you have expectations. And I think the, the best advertisements are certainly Anna and Baron, but what, what that demonstrates is that you're creating well-rounded citizens of the world, and that's really what we're trying to do. So, thank you, because this work can be challenging at times, it can be thankless at times, but clearly your energy has prevailed here. So, thank you, and congratulations on the Oscar. Thank you.
Stephanie will pass our books to the end?
We passed all those down.
What book is that? I want to see what book it is. Do you have a list?
The poetry lesson.
Yes, the whole thing. Before they share it, initially, they want to. I really appreciate the Bana work.
You know, the spring, to just kind of critique each lesson a little bit, make some changes. But I'll share the initial.
Okay. A plus. Tomorrow, I'm gonna hook together with you. Yeah. This was, I have to tell you.
None of the other schools do it right now?
Yeah.
Are you gonna share? Did you share it with the PTO president?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
It was A plus. A plus.
Anytime.
You know, it might be tatty, but Rich Garino will spread the word to the entire high school about the elementary. I couldn't think of a better person to be here tonight to see the elementary presentation.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We're gonna wait for, are we gonna wait? It's very fun being over on this side. Different. Would you wanna wait?
Me? My pleasure?
Mary.
I think we can, I think we go.
You go ahead.
Well, what are we gonna do? What do you mean?
Go.
Glenn's ready to go, but if we wanna wait for Leroy, or?
Uh, no.
Well, I, I think, is Leroy's, Mary, can you see his Leroy's? Here he comes. While we're getting it up.
Well.
What's that? Yes, that's right.
Maybe I could just say, while waiting, that Ms. Shan, Ms. Shan, oh my God, I can't even think, a superintendent, oh my God, would someone introduce you to Shan? Oh. And Ms. Gormley and Becky are also part of the Health and Wellness Committee, and this is an offshoot of the Health and Wellness Committee that we finally got this project done after.
Took a while, but we're there, so.
Quite a little while.
So, so, so I'll have a little setup about the Health and Wellness. We, we have subcommittees of the school committee that I tell the school committee all the time, make us better. And so, remember, Bagley Jones initiated the Health and Wellness Committee. Once a month, district-wide, I'll say, of all the committees that I sit on, there are parents, there are citizens who don't have children in the district, there are health advocates, there are wellness advocates, there are adjustment counselors, principals. We have agendas that everybody's interest comes to the table. And out of this Wellness Committee, I'm not gonna steal that thunder, Mr. Zulis, Chairman Walker, you may want to do the lead-in. I was just establishing where this idea came from.
I learned early on, I never try to follow you, so why don't you keep going?
And so, Ms. Bagley Jones and Rich Garino, one of the initiatives of the Wellness Committee was to gather resources for families and parents and guardians. So this, they're going to give you the backdrop of it and explain it, but talking about making a difference, this is going to be the gift that keeps giving, and I can't tell you on behalf of the district, the expertise that the two of you tapped to create this, that's going to be on the Milton website for all to benefit from, I'm eternally grateful. So to you.
Thank you.
So, as, as you guys know, when families and kids are struggling, the place they always look to is the school for guidance. If families run into a tough time, they look to the school. And I want to say it was about a year and a half ago, maybe longer, that John Fallon had the idea at Health and Wellness to say, we should put together a resource guide, we should create a pamphlet, so something quick that we can just give to families. Kristin and I picked up that task, we said we were gonna do it, and it turned into a much, much bigger project than we, we anticipated, but the outcome, I think, has been pretty outstanding. The best part about this for me is rather than having to call a guidance counselor or a principal and kind of bare your soul with all your personal business, families can just go online, they can look something up and just kind of find, find the supports that they need on their own time and in their own way. So I'll kick it over to you to.
And one of the things I think that really stood out when we started this a long time ago, it was right around when there were a lot of families in Milton that were losing their homes around the mortgage issues, and Rich was sharing with us how many needy families we were having, and families that hadn't expected to be so needy. And that's where some of the food and fuel assistance came from. Then we always have people asking us, both of us and other people, how do I find a therapist for my kid? You know, then it was substance abuse issues, we had, you know, prescription painkillers really expand in Milton unfortunately, became much more aware of heroin in all of the South Shore communities. So, and I'm not saying it's Milton, but it's in all of Massachusetts, it was an epidemic, is an epidemic, and so that was the other thing that really, we thought parents might need a place to look at things confidentially. So that's where this came from as well. So Glenn, if you want to put, so on the, and this was, so many people worked on this, I'm not even gonna try to say all their names, but a lot of people worked on this. The Family Resource Click right up there is a brand-new little click thing, whatever you call it. And if you can click on that.
There we go.
Oh, we're up. Okay. So if you look at it, each section has specific tabs, just a little, yeah, scroll down a little. This is just a little introduction. And then, keep going, keep going, and now, the things in blue, you can, if you click on, you just click on the resources right there for adjustment counselors, because I realize that information isn't necessarily easy to find. But now, you can click on it, and it will show you everybody's name, everything, how you reach them. And if you can go back, I just want to show you a couple of the sites, and then we'll be done. If you go to the Mental Health Issues and Crisis Intervention, a lot of questions I get, and Rich gets, and the other folks that work in this field, how do I find a therapist? What do I do? How do I know what to do? So we just went through, if you can scroll down, yeah, don't delete it. Good. Keep going, and then we just sort of outline what you should do, and we don't give names of specific therapists, but, because we can't do that, but we say, this is how you can find, and this is what you do if your child gets hospitalized, or if your child needs an acute, short-term treatment. And then we also listed a bunch of mental health sites. And then, if you could go to the Substance Abuse one. So on the Substance Abuse, we've worked hard to make sure that these things are updated, we wanted parents to be able to, our goal would be to have spaces, places for kids, but we're not there yet, and that'll take another two years. This is for parents to look things up, recovery groups, hospital stays, how you get some 12-step help. Did I miss anything on that?
No, all of that. The other, the other thing that's great about this from the guidance adjustment perspective is, whenever something would come up, I'd reach into my bag of tricks, maybe call Kristin or somebody, just to find some resources. So now, for all of us, we can access this too. You need to learn something about substance abuse, oh, look, learn to cope, this is great for families who are having trouble with their kid. So it's great for everybody in the district. I think that everybody should be really familiar with it, from teachers to administrators to certainly every counselor in the entire district.
I just shared a, a resource from this site with somebody that asked me about their older kid, and I was like, oh, I think we just put something like that in here. So that was a wonderful thing. So we just really wanted to put this out there, get people aware of it, ask, Mary's gonna help us roll it out to all the principals, the site councils, the guidance counselors, everybody, because we really want parents in the community to know that this is available to them. And that's it. That's it?
That's it.
So, and I know you'll all memorize every website on here and be familiar with the test.
I was gonna say, they don't need to. Click.
That's right.
Click and go.
And the Guidance Department and the Adjustment Counselor here next to me, Rich, they've just been great, really great, and has, they're just so important in Milton High School and the other schools, so. And can he come in late tomorrow, because it's 9:30?
It's okay, I'll, I'll be fine.
And any questions? All right, we have to have one.
I just, I don't know a question, but, I mean, as someone else on the Health and Wellness, and I haven't been on as long as Ms. Bagley Jones, but she and Mr. Garino put a lot of time in this, and not just putting something out there, but really wanting it the way they wanted it, and were very careful about how they put it together. So I just, I think it's fantastic, and you just took such care, both of you, this was kind of like something that was really special to you, and took a lot of time making sure it was the way you wanted it. So I just wanted to say that, it looks, it looks fantastic, and I love that it's gonna help our professionals, as well as parents, as well as kids, to find that information. It's friendly, you know, user-friendly to all of them. Even, even Ms. Bagley Jones can use it, she knows which clicky thing to go on.
Thank you, Becky, and thanks for everything, and that's it.
Thanks for having me.
And now I'll go back to the other side of the table.
I'll go on to the school calendar.
School calendar.
Chairman Walker had, had asked me to speak to the school calendar, and so, obviously, everything that could be said about snow and the weather has been said by everyone in the Boston area and Massachusetts and New England. And so, you have a, an piece in your packet, but on, when you received the material last Friday, I hope that the Commissioner's Weekly Update, it's not in your packet, if you did not get it last Friday, I'll make sure you get it tomorrow. So, for the viewing public, in the, in Massachusetts, children go to school for 180 days. And that is combined with, at the high school level, 990 hours, and at the elementary level, 900 hours. And this had to be, this has to be all documented, passing time, lunchtime, these are instructional hours. And so the Commissioner put out a piece as school districts were closing, canceling school for snow, and superintendents and the parents and teachers were all asking the Commissioner if there would be exceptions made, if perhaps the 180 days or the number of hours would be reduced. And in the piece that I've sent you from the Commissioner on February 13th, the Commissioner said that after you go to school to the last day of June, and if a school district also has used April vacation and Good Friday, then the school district should then contact the Commissioner about extending the day, and if you ever extended the day, it would have to be in a meaningful amount of time. And so, the Commissioner communicates with us around this. You've seen local press about districts that have used all that time, gone through the last day of school, somewhere up to 11, 12, 13 days off. So Chairman Walker had asked me to speak to this, and this is what's going, my recommendation on what we're going to do. To date, we have had seven snow days. The last day of school is currently a half-day on Thursday, June 25th. That leaves us with three possible makeup days, because remember, we go to school through the 30th of June. In the event of one more, if everyone sighs, in the event of one more additional day of no school due to inclement weather, the last day of school would be a half-day on Friday, June 26. Next, in the event of two more additional days of no school due to inclement weather, I would propose a half-day of school. We now have Good Friday off. I would propose that we go to school a half-day on Good Friday, and that would keep the last day of school on Friday, June 26. In the unlikely event of three or more additional days of no school due to inclement weather, I would bring a further proposal back to this committee and work with the MEA, the Milton Teachers Union, around April vacation. But right now, we're not making any proposal, we're making it very clear to the public, I'll put this out in my email blast this week, so that everyone knows if they're, what the last day of school is now, if there's one more snow day, two more snow days. But after our experience with the weather this year, and the Commissioner also recognized school districts, and this school committee and the prior superintendent, Dr. Jafun, should be recognized, the Commissioner recognized school districts that have taken the lead in beginning school before Labor Day. And he urged school districts to adopt that school calendar. And so, next year, Labor Day is the latest it can possibly be. Our calendar person, Dr. Palacek, has worked with me on this, and we go late into June. And so, I've given you a proposed 15, 16 calendar, but our next school committee meeting, I'm going to be bringing back to you a revised proposal for you to discuss on next year's school calendar. Any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Sheridan?
I do have a question, sorry. Ms. Gormley, the half-days at the end of the year, could those be, I know they're not gonna impact instruction and all that, but to cover time, if they were made full days, would that make a difference, or does a half a day qualify for a day?
Our half-days qualify as a full day.
Okay.
So many hours in a day.
They're not really half-days, right? They're more.
Right. It's a good question, a good clarifying question, they count as one full school day. But again, we have counted every minute, and when we put the professional development in this year, we've had to document the number of hours that, again, elementary and high school, and you have to submit that to the DESI.
And may I just say one more thing? The good news about this late end of the school year is that the Milton Music Festival and fireworks is going to be on Saturday, June 27th this year. So if you stay in school till the end of June, you get to have fireworks and a festival. Very good to know.
Ms. Kelly?
That's wonderful news, thank you.
Has nothing to do with me, though.
The 15, 16 calendar, has that been distributed to parents yet?
It has. So in my email blast, I'll put out that.
Under?
Yes. And one more note, what this is driving, we've had several meetings talking about summer school. As you well know, we have a thousand children enrolled in different summer school programs, so I've attached the calendars for you, so I want parents to know now, and we'll put it out in the blast tomorrow, that we can't close school and in one day turn around and start summer school. So our summer school programs are beginning on the 6th of July, because it would be near to impossible to have the end of school, and then the next day, turn around and begin summer school. There's transferring materials, furniture, and so we will begin the summer school, and that will push up the end, but if you follow the school calendar, it will give families some good time in August, because school starts, Labor Day is in September this year. Can't be any later.
Do you want to say that? So, I would just say, then, I'm just gonna put this out there, when we're looking at the revised, or proposed revised calendar, if, do you know what the last day of summer school would be then, if we're looking at July 6?
I do.
Fourth?
I believe August 6.
Okay. So I would just say that as much as I think people are, you know, looking at being a little bit unhappy about the school year going so late, I've heard many, many years of complaints, and I'm sure other people have too, like, why can't we wait until after, why can't we start school in September? Then we would have all of August with our families, and now we're pushing summer school to August 6. That I would be a little bit leery of starting school early, I mean, everybody agrees this is an unprecedented, unprecedented snow amount, you know, certainly it could be repeated next year, but if we're ending school so late, to then look at the calendar for next year and start it early, I think it's gonna leave a lot of people feeling a little short-changed about some of their summer vacation plans, so I would just think about that when we're looking at that.
That won't be one of our options.
I know. Thank you.
It doesn't say on.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
It doesn't say on here about the summer school, right?
It doesn't, because we, we'll put it out on the web tomorrow, we'll put it out, I'll put it out tomorrow. Friday is the day that we're formalizing the extended special ed services, all of the summer school programs.
So on the recommendations for this year, in the event of additional school days, I'll accept a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Zulis, seconded by Ms. Sheridan. Any further discussion? All in favor? To unanimous.
Thank you, and I know the hour is getting late. I want to thank the school committee who took the leadership, and in the asking us and working with us on our first grade information night, we had a phenomenal first grade information night that you had heard referenced. The first grade choice forms have gone out, the first grade informational presentation is on the web. I would encourage any parent or guardian of a rising first grader who did not attend the event, to go to the web. We took all the questions and answers, spent a tremendous amount of time editing all of those and put them on the web. Ms. Kelly picked up a really important correction today. Dr. Palacek, do you want to speak to that correction?
Right, one of the, one of the slides in the first grade information night had, had an inaccuracy in it, which we'll correct on the web tomorrow. We said it correctly at first grade information night, but it doesn't appear correctly on the slide. We said at first grade information night, which is our policy, that in each school, there'll be two English Innovation Pathways classes in the first grade, at least two, and then the rest of the classes will be depended on the needs of the district and the, the choices of the parents. On one of the slides, it refers to, rather than the sort of default setup of two, for instance, in the three-unit schools, two English and one French, and then the four-unit schools, two English and two French, refers to them as a minimum. And that's not true, and that's not correct, because not, if, for instance, at the Collycott School, there is no guarantee there'll be a minimum of two French classes, we just know there'll be a minimum of two English. Enrollment will determine whether, how those, there'll be five next year at Cunningham, because, Collycott, sorry, because they're rolling up five kindergarteners, how that will split out. The only piece of our policy is, is a minimum of two English. So we'll correct that slide. We said it properly at first grade night, but it doesn't appear correctly in the presentation, so we'll fix that on the web.
And I, and Ms. Kelly had an excellent point. We're going to remind parents tomorrow about the choice forms, we'll communicate with all the parents and guardians, we have all of their email addresses of rising first graders, and they may have watched the presentation, and then leave it and don't go back, and we're going to tell them about the correction tomorrow in an email. So we talked about first grade, we've done our kindergarten information night, all of the parents have come for registration, the incoming kindergarteners will be coming for their screening. A very outstanding accomplishment driven by the school committee and their support of preschool, is that, that, as I spoke to that position, as a proposed cut in the budget, this preschool initiative, which is national, and the Milton Public Schools and the Milton School Committee has embraced the understanding how important preschool is for children starting into their K-12 experience. Under the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Sheen, we have brought together a preschool team across the district, and for the first time, I'm proud to tell you, Assistant Superintendent Sheen is working with the group to, and this has been posted on the web, we're going to note a few corrections that the school committee brought to my attention today, we're going to correct them on the web and get them out to all parents that we're aware of. Again, we might not be able to contact all of them, but if they're viewing tonight, they'll go and see the edits. So this is really a comprehensive, clear place, just like Ms. Bagley Jones's site, that in parents of incoming, who don't have children in the district, or have children in the district and have rising fourth, four or five, three or four-year-olds can go and better understand the preschool options in the Milton Public Schools. So I'm gonna turn this over to Assistant Superintendent Sheen to briefly just walk you through it. It was in your packets, but this is really a first for the Milton Public Schools, and I think a huge leap and jump into building a very strong preschool program in our district. This is, we're passing out the corrected version to you now. I want to thank Member Kelly and Walker for bringing a few issues to our attention today. That's the value of sending these packets out and the time that you put into reviewing the materials.
So as Superintendent Gormley just noted, we have brought together a team to, to develop an overview of our preschool programs across the district, and I would like to give special thanks to Dr. Elaine McNeil-Gremai and Principal, Mrs. Holly Concanon.
Thank you.
For, for their work in developing this, and we also had input from the other principals, and from our, our preschool teacher in the Child Study Program here at Milton High School, Mrs. Mullen. So also, as Superintendent Gormley previously noted, we, you know, many years ago, we had one preschool program that was housed here at Milton High School, and for a number of years now, we have had an integrated preschool program at the Collycott, and the Child Study Pre-Kindergarten Program has continued at Milton High School. The, the advancement budget allowed us to begin a pilot program that was housed at the Tucker School last year. It's a district-wide program, and the advancement budget allowed for the purchase of instructional materials for a program that would be offered to students who may not have otherwise attended a preschool program. not have otherwise attended a preschool program. Students would be able to attend one, two, or three of the three sessions offered throughout the school year. It's offered Mondays and Wednesdays this year, and for, it's a morning program. So next year's, the FY16 Advancement Initiative now is allowing us to further expand the Kindergarten Readiness Pilot Program, this district-wide program, again, housed at the Tucker Elementary School. And we now will have a full-time teacher. We're going to be able to purchase additional instructional materials, and we will also have a, two sessions of students, so that we can support approximately 24 students in that program. So given that we have not only expanded the kindergarten readiness pilot program, I failed to mention that we also expanded the Integrated Preschool Program this year. We were able to offer an additional sub-separate program after identifying the needs of the community, children who had been identified through assessment and through early intervention. So the three of our programs, they are, they have many things about them that are, that are consistent, and you can see, you know, the bullets indicate that all three of the programs will have the same curriculum, and that is the creative curriculum. Right now, the pilot program has that curriculum in our integrated programs at the Collycott School, and this is being implemented this year. It is a comprehensive preschool program that develops readiness skills. It addresses all of the developmental domains for children three or four years old, and really provides some excellent planning for teachers day-to-day, and we're hearing very positive things about this. It's aligned with the frameworks and learning standards. So as you can see, students will have the opportunity to engage in the core content areas through this program. All three programs will have a small ratio of students to adults. We have instructional aids or educational assistance, assistance supporting all three programs. The integrated preschool and child study pre-kindergarten programs will have a set tuition. The, the program housed at the Tucker, the Readiness Pilot Program, will be based on the identification of students by the principals across the district, as well as our family outreach liaison. So that, there will not be a fee for that program. It's the second year of the pilot, and so we would like to, to continue the development of that program. All programs will follow the school calendar for our kindergarten students, and the, again, this is, this is posted on the website, and the revisions will be posted tomorrow. But we have given the link, so that parents of the Integrated Preschool Program and the Child Study Program can access a preregistration form, and that gives the, that gives us information about the families, their interests in participating in the programs. Depending on the numbers, we'll determine whether or not we hold lotteries at the, for the Integrated Preschool Program, and, as well as the, the Child Study Program. Okay. So, so here are the features of each of the three programs, and gives parents information about the age of students, the tuition costs, and again, how to access the link, so that they can preregister. Once we have identified the numbers and look at enrollments, then we will, again, determine in two of the programs whether or not there'll be a lottery, there'll be a waiting list, and then, once parents, once students are selected, then they will be guided to the registration. So this is really the first time that we have, have posted information about all three programs, and I think that parents are going to find this also as a, as a great resource, and it will really clarify some of the questions that they've had over the years. Some of the, so our program here at the high school has, has been a very popular program, but it seems that many parents have registered by word of mouth. And we want all of our students to have a fair and equitable opportunity to participate in programs across the district, and hope that all of, all of our programs are going to further provide opportunities to close proficiency gaps and support early literacy initiatives.
And one other note, I was remiss, that school committee member Becky Padera is part of our, school committee member Becky Padera is part of our team. We meet at the Tucker, and so, again, under the leadership of Janet Sheehan, now this is all brought together in one place. All of these individuals are learning from one another, and it's only going to benefit children and to Assistant Superintendent Sheehan's point, work on early literacy and closing those proficiency gaps. Becky?
This is great. Yeah, I would just like to say one other thing, and I think you mentioned her before, but our, our family liaison has done a great job, Ms. McKenna, at finding these students that would otherwise be at home and not in preschool. This is, a lot of these, you know, especially our new program is targeting some of these students that would otherwise not be in a preschool setting, and they did a really great job at helping find those students, and she, in particular. And also, Dr. Elaine Germay has done a great job leading up this program and assessing how the students are doing and their progress and reporting back on that. And if any school committee member wants to stop by Tucker and see the little space they've created, it's just beyond adorable. But, yeah, it's, they, they went above and beyond, I think, what we had started off talking about, and they've just gone above and beyond in creating this program, and it's grown. Just, I mean, she, you can say how much it's grown. I think we started off with just a handful of kids, and already they are, have like a waiting list at this point.
Full capacity.
Yeah. It's, it's fantastic. So I can't say enough good things about it, so.
Ms. Sheridan?
Is this on the web? Is this on the MiltonPS.org website?
It is. And we've also made an adjustment to the website, so that parents can more easily access information about the preschool. It's posted on the web, and as, as we said, there are some revisions that need, that have been made. The revised document was just, was just handed out to you, but those revisions will appear on the website tomorrow.
It's on the homepage. It's not tucked away, so.
So what tab is it under?
It's not. It's on the homepage.
It is, it is for now. It is for now, but it will be under student registration, and it will also be under preschool. So when you go to the, to the dropdown for schools, you'll see preschool.
Ms. Kelly?
This is terrific. Thank you very much for all the time and effort that went into putting it together. Is this something that, and I don't even know if we still do flyers and backpacks, but is this something that could go home via that method, or even, I don't know, the, in, I don't know, the different places around town?
Yes.
Just so that we could try and get it in different ways, rather than just on the website?
Could. I think that's a great idea to send it home.
We'll work with the preschool alliance there.
Yep.
Susan Dolan, and get it out.
And the library, still would be a good place to put it.
Ms. Kelly?
So, given the success of the pilot program, and we're still considering just the one classroom, no?
I think, well, we're, we're increasing the time, but are we...
So next, for the next year, it will be, you'll either sign up for a five morning or a five afternoon.
So it'll be two classes?
Yes.
But it'll be more time and more classes.
Is that not clear on that?
No, 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 it is. But, but I'm trying to understand, what do we have now? So you said there's a waiting list for the program we have now, which is what?
Two mornings per week.
Okay.
And it's three sessions. They're divided into three 10-week sessions for the school year.
Yep.
And their hopes, hopes were, depending on the number of children, they could, they could sign up 12 children for the first session, another 12 for the second. It, it so happens that some have, have stayed in the sessions and been able to benefit from more than one session.
So I guess, given, it looks like there's, you could accommodate in the proposed next year's 24 students.
Yes.
What's the waiting list in this year's group?
Good question.
I think it's just a couple, a couple.
Okay.
And they will likely go into the third session. Those children will have an opportunity in the third session.
And I thought the success, Ms. Kelly, was the number of students that returned the second session, that are staying with the program.
Yep. That's great.
Congratulations.
Yeah, this really is great. To the school committee. So briefly, the happenings. We, I think we spoke to kindergarten, preschool, and first grade. The program choice forms have gone out. This is a big night in the elementary schools. We're talking about K-12, but a big night for the viewing audience, parents and guardians. Do we, many of you may remember the Growth and Development Presentation. This is a rite of passage for our parents and children of fifth graders. 6:30 at the Glover School, Dr. Madora, our history teacher at Milton High School, and lacrosse coach, when Dr. Bonacci retired after a long career, being our physician consultant. Dr. Madora is now our consultant, and she will be doing that night for parents of fifth-grade children on March 9th at the Glover at 6:30. I would urge parents and guardians watching, parent-teacher conferences are coming up on March 12th. You'll be contacted by your school principal and teachers, but again, you should contact your schools. Again, MFE celebration, I sent out an email. I think that they're almost sold out of tickets. March 14th, I wish them the best of luck on what's going to be an exciting night. We have Milton High School greeters, we have Milton High School band, we have my Milton High School singers, and we have students speaking at Fund a Need. So there's unbelievable teacher and administrative support, school committee support from the Milton Public Schools. Thank you. In closing, perhaps, Mr. Walker, you were there, I wasn't, the boys' ice hockey last Friday night, and maybe speak to the girls' ice hockey?
I can speak to the boys. Kind of a heartbreaker. So they were down 2-0 in the first, at the end of the first period. They played a phenomenal second period, where we played almost the whole period in Marshfield's, beyond Marshfield's blue line. They scored three goals, so they were up 3-2 at the end of the second period. But in the third period, we fell a little short. The coach pulled the goalie a little early, I thought. Just my opinion.
Chairman, Ice Hockey Walker, use the word.
They scored an empty, empty goal-goal. But anyway, it was, it was exciting.
Only from a hockey player and fan could you get that detail. You're not going to get that from me.
I'm surprised you didn't stop the game.
Chairman Walker used the word for the boys' ice hockey. You used the word inspired.
It was amazing.
Inspired.
It's one of the best, one of the best periods I've ever seen Milton Boys Hockey play. I mean, they were unbelievable.
Coach Noonan and those boys. And the girls' ice hockey, I think you'd probably even not being there give the best detail.
They won 1-0 in a shootout.
Double zero.
So are we going to Bourne on Friday?
Bourne, Bourne at 5 o'clock this Saturday night.
Okay.
Playing Wellesley.
I'll be there.
Excellent. That's the...
That's, that's going to be a really good game. We tied Wellesley one, one time this year, and, and we beat them. So they're actually seeded above us. That's going to be, that's going to be a really good game.
And in closing, I have one thing to say. It is amazing, not being an athlete, and Chairman Walker corrects me about the court and the field and the ice, but my observation is, it really is amazing to be in an American high school, and when these student athletes go to tournament, the other 1,000 students all think they're on the ice, or on the court, or on the field. And the level of enthusiasm and pride that this whole phenomenon brings to a high school is really inspiring. So to, to the families, to the coaches, to the students, to all the individuals who support the clubs and activities and athletics, to the parent who spoke so eloquently to that tonight, it does create the citizens of the world. Thank you.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
Really quickly, the girls' basketball team made it to tournament in the first time since 2003, I think. They did lose, but they made it to tournament.
11 years, yep.
First time in a long time.
Okay. Superintendent's Goals, just a little context. You have these in your, in your packet. This is, this is the development of another two-year cycle, so these goals would be in effect from July 1, 2014, through June 30, 2016. So we would expect to do a mid-cycle review, probably in October this year, and then a final summative evaluation in probably October of 2016. So as you can see, the goals continue to parallel the advancement initiatives and the goals that the school committee developed in its planning sessions earlier in the year. So certainly willing to have discussion, but I'd like to get these adopted tonight if we can. Ms. Bagley-Jones?
On the very first one, I like the second page where it shows the gap.
Yep.
That's the, is that specific?
Yes.
And I like that.
And thank you very much to Courtney Miller, who is our resident expert on proficiency gaps.
And then on the other one, reduce participation gaps. I, I just would like that to be more specific, Mary, for you, in terms of is there pre and post numbers? Are you going to have specific outreach that you're going to do? And then implement a comprehensive plan for all students around the social health, which of course, I totally support. I'm just curious, like, how you're going to get that done by January 2016, and maybe it can be broken down a little bit? I don't know. And then how are you going to get 100% of teachers who will be able to demonstrate proficiency? What, what do we used to say? If you expect it, you have to inspect it? How are you going to know that 100% of teachers demonstrate proficiency? In writing, reading, and understanding, not in reading, but reading, understanding, implementing IEP goals in the STEM curriculum. I like it, but I just want to make sure it's realistic and can be accurately portrayed.
So do you believe any of those are showstoppers with regard to a vote this evening?
No.
Okay.
I'm just putting it out there to say to Mary.
I will detail those and report out at the next meeting.
Yeah, it's more for you, Mary, than for us. No, I think they're great.
Other discussion? Do I have a motion?
Some rule.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sheridan. Seconded by Ms. Bagley-Jones. On the motion, all in favor? Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. I'm going to do the budget update next time. We're, we never adopted the Bagley-Jones rule of trying to end by 10, but I'm going to try to get us out of here as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Finance Subcommittee?
Yes. I think first we have an approval of vendor warrant. Dr. Pavlichek?
We have two vendor warrants since our last meeting. Warrant number 35, which was last week, February 26th, in the amount of $429,994.94. That's the first one.
So I would move that we approve vendor warrant number...
35.
35, in the amount that Dr. Pavlichek just relayed, because I didn't write it down.
Second. Moved by Ms. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Zulis. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Stained. 501.
And the second is warrant number 36, dated March 5th, in the amount of $412,456.34.
So I would move that we approve vendor warrant number 36, in the amount that Dr. Pavlichek just relayed.
Second. Any further discussion?
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Staying? 501. Thank you.
And then, are we going over this next item?
It's just information. Yeah?
Yep. Okay. Do you want to go over it, seeing that you are?
Well, about two weeks ago, we received more information on the fiscal '16 cost of the SRO. The agreement we have with the selectmen does reference that in fiscal '16, we would pay the full cost of the officer. I think it would be fair to say none of us expected a 38% increase in the cost, but it is what it is. So you have that in your packet. I think the total amount is $83,782.15. We discussed this in Finance Subcommittee on Tuesday, and we did ask the superintendent to communicate with the police chief and see whether we could perhaps get a cost that was closer to what we budgeted, which I think is in the $60,000 to $65,000 range. So I just wanted to make sure that the committee was informed. As I said, we just recently got this information, and we may have more to report at a later Ms. Kelly?
But also, just to note that this is a higher cost than we have in our present '16 budget, and therefore, we're going to need to find that funding gap if nothing moves with the Board of Selectmen.
That's correct.
So it's just to be aware of that. Okay.
Ms. Padera?
So is this going to be the cost every year? Because some of these, I didn't know if some of these costs are one-time money or like, I mean, like the education cost seems?
Every year.
That's every year?
That's the Quinnville.
Well, the agreement ends in '16, so the whole relationship is up for discussion after that.
You mean the contract for the SRO is?
The agreement.
But this is, so what I'm trying to find out is this is what, instead of $65,000, this is more what it would cost baseline, and then it would probably increase?
Correct. By cost of living increases and any other. Actually, all of the salary-related ones will increase if the base salary increases. So holiday would increase.
So all these things are yearly costs that's added to the salary?
Yes. Ms. Kelly?
So can I just ask, is this specific to the particular person who's filling the role? Or this would be sort of the box into which anyone would move in and out? So you know?
Yes and no.
Okay.
So the base salary would be dependent on their length of service. Holiday would be related to the base. Night differential would be related to the base. Longevity would be related to their length of service. And education would be related to their education credentials.
Okay.
Transportation and traffic safety Subcommittee? Yes.
One other, we're not discussing this year's budget, but one thing I just want to point out from the governor's budget that we are, we're talking about now, we have a 9C cut in kindergarten this year. Our kindergarten grant was cut from $153,000 to $119,000 mid-year. So we have a $33,000 cost we're going to have to absorb this current fiscal year due to the cuts in funding from the State House to make up the fiscal '15 deficit. In the governor's fiscal '16 budget, the kindergarten grant program is eliminated. So if that holds, that would be a $153,000 deficit in next year's budget. So we will have to watch that one carefully. Again, it's the first step in the process, but I've just, they have just been posting it. The kindergarten, not enrichment, but expansion grant, it's called, is funded at zero in the governor's budget for next year.
So with regard to that potential elimination in fiscal '16, for the March 18th meeting, can we do some what-if scenarios about the impact for the committee?
And we have, for the school committee to know, when we present to the parents, we always mention that this tuition is based on the full-day kindergarten grant. We mentioned it. It's not the highlight of the program, but we do make parents aware, and it is in the present, it's in the presentation too, that it's pending the full-day kindergarten grant. That kind of reduction, we've seen reductions before in the advocacy of parents across the state. And the kindergarten advocates led by Ada Rose Marin proved before to be able to bring back some of those funds. But that would be, I've never seen it completely eliminated before.
Or even proposed to be eliminated. Sorry.
I've never seen a proposed complete elimination before.
Many of the grant programs are consolidated also and reduced. I mean, we have MCAS support grants, we have teacher quality grants, and a few other things like that. They have, in the proposed budget, they have been rolled together and reduced by 25%. So there may be some more limited availability of some of the other grants that we get on an annual basis or apply for on an annual basis. Again, it's a preliminary proposal. We'll see what sticks. But that is, at the moment, that's out there, at least based on my reading of what came out at 5:30 this afternoon.
Transportation and traffic safety Subcommittee?
Yes, I'll give you a very brief update. We have met on two occasions. We're proceeding really on two tracks. The first is to identify issues for each of the schools. We have identified issues for the Glover, Tucker, and Collicott. And at our next meeting, we hope to identify the issues for Pierce and Cunningham. I'd characterize the issues as either specific or global. The specific issues, we're referring to Jake Smith to deal with specifically. And the global issues, we need to determine how best to address, whether that to be to address, and we'll make a recommendation to this committee on how to address them, whether it be through the Police Department or the Traffic Commission or the DCR or the state. And then the other avenue that we're pursuing, one of the members of the group is Jana Linhardt from the Department of Transportation, State Department of Transportation, Massachusetts, Safe Roots to School. And we have given her the information, all the addresses of each of the elementary schools and the middle schools, so that she can prepare walking assessments. And they will prepare walking assessments for each of the schools, so we can identify some of the issues there. And also, they will identify and we can, they will map out our safe walking routes, the safe walking routes. So they're going to help us with that. So those are the things we're pursuing. We're looking for members from Collicott, one of our Collicott members is, so we're going to need someone from Collicott and from Pierce to bring our group back up to full capacity.
No old business and next meeting agenda items? Ms. Kelly?
The grade-level assessments, is that something that we would be getting an update on? I don't want to, I don't know what the normal timing would be, but you mentioned it earlier, and I think it's an opportunity for us.
Good.
And whether it's next meeting or some meeting in the future, hopefully before I leave, but that would be nice.
And I might take you up on April for that. I may take you up on not the next meeting in March, but the next one.
Okay. And then just wondering whether, perhaps not this year, but the science assessments? That should be part of this as we move forward on regular?
We'll do the whole picture for you. Language is captured.
No, if you have them, that's great. But if you're not ready to do that, that's fine. But maybe going forward into next year, that should be part of.
Partially done. I'd like to update that for you.
Sheridan?
Just school committee minutes. We haven't approved any in a while, so if we can get those back on the agenda for next, if that's possible.
We'll take a look at that. And can we get an update on the outreach liaison work?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, not to return to public session for the purpose of discussing Ask Me Collective bargaining strategy, the discussion of which in public session would be detrimental to our bargaining position.
So move.
Thank you. Roll call. Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Padera?
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan?
Yes.
Mr. Walker? Yes, we are adjourned.